I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order on April 21st, 2025. Ask the city clerk to please call roll.
Commissioner Henderson?
Present.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Present.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Bray?
Present.
I'll ask Commissioner Wilson to do the invocation, and then we'll all remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you on behalf of all of us who are gathered here for the many blessings that we have. Thank you for the beautiful day that we have had to enjoy and for the ability to be involved in useful work. We come to you asking for guidance and support as we begin this meeting. Please grant us wisdom as we make decisions on behalf of our citizens. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undying, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bring your baby in now. City manager, are there any deletions to the agenda this evening?
Mayor, none this evening.
Okay, first item on the agenda is a new employee introduction. Amy, I'll invite you up.
Good evening, mayor, commissioners, city manager, and city clerk. I'd like to reintroduce one of our employees, Greg Shelton. He started with us as a laborer in the Parks Department in 2018. In 2022, we promoted him to a supervisor, and most recently, we just promoted him to Assistant Director of Parks Maintenance. So I'm excited. He's done a lot of really good things in the last couple of years as a supervisor. He has kind of spearheaded our cemetery, and we've had a lot of improvement out there over the last couple of years, so I'm excited to see what he can do in this role.
I would just like to say thank you for the incredible opportunity, and I'm honored to be a part of this team. I'm hoping to grow a lot with you guys, and thank you once again.
Thank you, Greg, and congratulations. Sounds like a spiraling career.
At least it's upward.
Going in the right direction, and I like it a lot. So congratulations on your promotion and good luck, and you've got our support. I tell you, the cemetery's, that's a tough one out there. It's a lot of ground, and we have challenges from time to time, but haven't hurt much lately, so I think we have got some good things going. So congrats.
Congratulations.
And Lindsey?
Yes, Laura, could you please come up? I am excited to introduce you all to Laura Cowan. She is our new development liaison with the Customer Experience Department. She comes to us with 11 years of experience at an architectural firm where she was in interior design and in construction administration. She more recently served in the Ohio Township and municipality with several years as a zoning inspector, and so she's excited to utilize her experience and her great personality as our development liaison. Her daughter Sarah moved to the area about a year and a half ago, and so she has decided to come and work for us here, and we are very excited to have her onboard. She started with us on the very first of this month, and she has already made a fantastic impact. Really have enjoyed working with her, and I know as you all get to know her, you're going to really enjoy her, too.
Great. Laura, anything to say?
Just, again, very excited to be here. Love the area. I'm just, I'm just excited for this brand-new adventure and getting to learn more about the businesses coming and everyone here that I work with, and I'm just excited. I'm on top of the world about it all. Thank you.
Well, it's great to have you onboard and maybe just to unpack a little bit the role that you're in, you know, for the benefit of people out there. You know, we, when people get permitted, they have to go to different departments in the city, and sometimes the permitting process in the past has gotten hung up between departments. And so our approach, our customer-facing approach to the contractors and the folks that are trying to get permits, this is going to provide an improvement for them, speed up the process, and really give a, I'm going to say, a customer service, customer experience approach, so that people don't think they're getting the runaround all the time, which, you know, can happen and has happened in the past. Nobody's fault in particular, but this will allow you to pick up the projects, know where the projects are, and it's very important, and I can't tell you how excited we are to have you here.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Okay, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I've got, all my commissioners really love these proclamations, but we have two proclamations tonight, and they are very important. The first one is on mental health, and maybe before I stand up and talk about it up there a little bit, I'll just say I want to call out Commissioner Ray Henderson. A couple of years ago, we were going through the commission priority process, and Commissioner Henderson called out, during that process, all the commissioners get a chance to, you know, kind of weigh in on what's most important to them, their constituents, and Ray weighed in on mental health, and really, I think, kind of focused, refocused the commission on some of the challenges around mental health. And so when we get an opportunity to do these proclamations, especially one like this, it's very welcome, so. So the way we do this is I read it up here, and then I think we've got several agencies here representing mental health, so we'll invite everybody up, and we'll get a picture as soon as I do this. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all people experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our community, and whereas raising awareness and understanding of mental health can help reduce stigma and encourage individuals to see help early, improving outcomes and saving lives, and whereas we recognize community members, advocates, and mental health professionals that work tirelessly to provide critical support and advocate to improve access to care and protect the rights of people living with mental health conditions, and whereas Mental Health Awareness Month provides a dedicated time to come together as a community, support mental wellness, promote education and compassion, and renew our commitment to understanding mental health. And now therefore, I, George P. Bray, mayor of the city of Paducah, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Paducah, and encourage all our citizens to support those affected and to work together to create a culture where mental health is valued and prioritized. Who's going to accept this? I need somebody very official. You look like one.
Is it actually okay if we got a picture?
Yes.
Oh, you don't have to get out.
How are you doing?
All right, let's just spread on.
So it didn't look like I was photobombing. Kind of hide behind somebody.
All right, three, two, one.
Okay. Thank you. And the second proclamation has to do with tennis, the sport of tennis. And this is noteworthy, I think, you know, because tennis has been around for a long time. It's a very popular sport. I think in the last couple of years, there's been a lot of discussion about pickleball. A lot of people started playing pickleball. But there is a tennis community here in Paducah that goes way, way back, and tennis is, of course, it's an Olympic sport, and it's very important to the community. I was over at the park this weekend. I saw, between some of the rainfall, you know, I saw lots of tennis players over there. So I'll read this proclamation, and Sarah is here somewhere. There you are. Okay. All right, great. Whereas tennis is a lifelong sport that contributes to physical fitness, mental wellness, and social connection for individuals of all ages and backgrounds, and whereas the United States Tennis Association and tennis communities across the country celebrate May as National Tennis Month, highlighting the sport's benefits and increasing awareness and participation. And whereas tennis is accessible and adaptable, offering opportunities for recreational play, competitive development, and inclusive programs for individuals with disabilities, seniors, and youth, and whereas tennis teaches valuable life skills such as discipline, perseverance, teamwork, and sportsmanship, making it an important part of character and youth development. And whereas during National Tennis Month, we encourage people to pick up a racket and engage in an activity that promotes healthy living, community building, and fun. And now therefore, I, George P. Bray, mayor of the city of Paducah, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as National Tennis Month in Paducah, and encourage all our citizens to discover the joy of tennis, support local programs, and celebrate the positive impact of this sport in our lives and communities. Okay?
These are my two friends, Fallon and Nola. They're going to be in the picture, too. Want to get on the side? You're in charge.
You don't hold. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. That's clever. All right. Take number two.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay?
Everybody get cookies?
We did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So our own Beverly Underwood, you know, she plays a lot of tennis, so the pickleballers are never going to get, you know, ahead in city halls as long as Beverly's here, so. Okay, next on the agenda is public comments, and we have one person here to make public comments, and that is Cheryl Goodwin. Lower Goodwin.
This got into my three minutes.
Not yet. Welcome, Cheryl.
How you doing, Sandra? Commissioner Wilson? Well, I'm back to speak on petition and propose better public restroom facilities for Robert Coleman Park. As you know, that is a historical park, so I've taken a look at the porta-potties that are up there. Now, it's my understanding that they are making upgrades to the park, but it's only going to be contained to the splash park and changing out the pumps. If I'm wrong, correct me. Robert Coleman Park is a neighborhood park as classified by the Parks and Recreation. It's 2.4 acres, and with our sister park, Cobb Park, is 1.97 acres. We are a neighborhood park. It is highly used. I believe about in 2012 or so, they said it was underused, but I do not find that to be the truth. This park provides a lot of accessibility to all Padukians, and presently, the porta-potties that are up there are not up to code. They're not buckled down. There's no handwashing stations. As you can see from my friend in the picture there, his name is Bo, he says unless you can pop a wheelie, you cannot get into a porta potty. Also, my good little friend Danny, he's also in a wheelchair, and his mother, you know, doesn't use those porta-potties at all. I'm not going to say a lot of things that I feel should be said at this time. I've asked to meet. I'm not here to be a problem. I'm here to be part of the solution. I'm a South Side resident. I've been on the South Side Initiative team, which is presently on pause, but I'm not on pause. I represent the Native African American Museum and Library for Storytellers. Most recently, we were at the park with the Brothers of Omega Psi Phi who hosted a treasure hunt for the children. That was on Saturday. On Friday, the Early Learning Collective with the Park and Recreation also hosted an event. Those pictures are right over there on Park Night Out. I'm trying to find the right words to say, that it's time, you know, this is Robert Coleman Park. It's a historical park, and I am compelled to, you know, I hope that you all will reconsider the need for a public, proper public restroom at Robert Coleman Park. Is that my three minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Do I am allowed to go over? Enclosed with a proper shelter and with those porta-potties that are not set up structurally correct, they're not up to code, there's no ramp, they're not bolted down, I mean, think of the Wizard of Oz, somebody's going down the street in a porta potty. However, with a proper structure, what is going to provide is shelter from the storms. I thank you, and you have a great evening.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you very much.
Do you want Amy to address that, she's here about our RFP?
Sure, yeah. Amy, would you like to come up and just give us an update?
Sure. Good evening again. So the RFP is out right now for the Sprague Ground project. It does include restrooms. So we will be updating that restroom facility, and we'll have year-round restrooms in Coleman Park once this project is done.
Okay, I've asked to be part of the plan and to see these things that are coming out. There's other concerns with the report that is not up to code, that I've discussed with several of the commissioners, and I don't know how to be part of the group of the plan and redesign of the report.
Sure. Well, the RFP that's out is specifically for the Sprague Ground and the restrooms, and it's a design-build project, which will, so once we get through the RFP process and we select a vendor, then we'll be able to start that process, and we'll have stakeholder meetings that you can be a part of.
And you will be invited to the stakeholder meeting. Okay? Yes, ma'am.
And the RFP is due on Thursday.
Oh, it's out, and the bids are due, okay.
This week, we should know more.
Very good. Thank you for being here, Cheryl. Okay, so we'll move to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners, and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There may be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. The city clerk will read the items recommended for approval unless a commissioner would like an item pulled off for separate discussion. Hearing none, I would ask you, please read.
Approved minutes for the April 8th, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting, received and filed documents, personnel actions, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with TENS+ Incorporated for temporary seasonal intent to hire employees, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Tesco Solutions to rewire data cabling in City Hall, a municipal order authorizing and directing the city manager to initiate a request for proposals for the repair and replacement of existing light poles and lighting in Dolly McNutt Plaza, a municipal order authorizing and directing the city manager to initiate a request for proposals for custodial services in city parks facilities, a municipal order authorizing payment to Actley Defense Incorporated for 220 units of HESCO bastions in the amount of $123,450 to protect the Julian Carroll Convention and Expo Center during the 2025 flood, a municipal order authorizing and directing the city manager to initiate a request for proposals for recruitment services for the Hotel Metropolitan Executive Director position.
So moved. Call roll.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Okay, we have one ordinance to adopt. We read this two weeks ago, so I'll ask the city clerk to read it and see if there's any questions.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2024-06-8815, entitled, an ordinance adopting the city of Paducah, Kentucky annual operating budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025, as adopted by ordinance number 2024-06-8815, be amended by the following appropriations: increased revenues and expenditures for the CDBG fund by $200,000.
So moved. Second. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none. Call roll, please.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
So we have two ordinances to introduce tonight, and the first one, I'll let the city clerk read, and then Michelle and our city clerk will go over it.
A proposed motion for the Board of Commissioners to introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance adopting an incentive program for city officials to obtain training related to city government. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance establishes a training incentive program for elected officials of the city of Paducah in accordance with KRS 64.5278. Under the program, officials are required to complete 15 hours of approved training annually. Up to 10 unused training hours may be carried over to the following year. Elected officials who fulfill the annual training requirement will receive a $500 incentive for each year of completion. These payments may accumulate annually up to a maximum of $2,000. Additionally, the ordinance designates Kentucky League of Cities as the administrator of the program.
Second.
Okay.
All right, so Michelle and I have worked on this along with the city manager, and so I'll just give you kind of high-level overview of what it is. KRS has a section in Chapter 64 that allows for local governments to initiate a training incentive program for elected officials, and so that is what this ordinance does. That incentive program allows for city officials to gain up to 15 hours per year of training, and that would equate to a $500 incentive for those hours of training. That payment can be, it can increase each year that you receive the training, so if you get 15 hours in year one, that's $500; 15 hours in year two, that would be $1,000, and that continues to go up until you reach the cap amount of $2,000 annually. If any year the training is not reached, that maximum amount, that required amount of 15 hours, then it would drop back down to zero, and that would build back up. KLC administrates this program for several cities. I believe 27 cities in Kentucky have adopted this type of program, most of which take the maximum allowable annual amount of $500, and then we are proposing having 10 hours of potential rollover each year. So let's say this year you got 25 hours of training, 15 could count to this year, and 10 could go toward next year, and that rolls over on a calendar year basis.
I believe the county, doesn't the county have something similar, or has had for many years? for many years?
They do. They've had something similar for many years. It's actually set by a different KRS and allows them to have more incentive pay. This would be the maximum allowable for city governments. That may change in the future and that maximum may be taken away for cities.
What if you don't, you're as good as you're going to get and you don't need training?
Hey, then, then, no need.
But it's not mandatory.
It is not mandatory, no. It is, it is all optional, and then you all would send in your training hours to KLC to review, and at the end of the year, they send back a report that shows those who have completed training and the payments can be made.
And how do you know when the training's offered? Is it only if their conference is out of town or?
It can be any applicable training, so they, pretty much any KLC training would, would go toward this, but also if there are other trainings that you take that have to do with ethics or local government rules, requirements, laws, anything of that type of nature, you could submit to KLC with the name of the training, the date, the location, the time, all of that, and they could determine whether or not that would be applicable to the 15 hours.
And that goes for like higher education?
It could, yeah. It could. All of that, and if, since this ordinance makes KLC the administrator, they just review all of that for us. So, you submit it all to them and they, they give the go-ahead or not based on those trainings. If there's a question about whether something would apply, they say just send that to them beforehand and they can let you know whether or not it would be approved.
So, Commissioner, Commissioner Thomas is the one that called us out, you know, and I think you went to a training and.
Yeah, KLC training is in Lexington. Me and Reverend Henderson went over that one.
And discovered it, and I guess maybe I knew about it, but just hadn't, you know, hadn't really thought about it in a while. But the whole idea is to, is to provide your elected officials with, you know, somewhat of an incentive to continue to improve themselves, get more knowledgeable in subjects that are important to the roles that we fill for the community. So, I, I think it makes a lot of sense. I think it's, you don't have to do it, but, but there's an incentive out there for you to be more involved and educate yourself. And I think more education is always good for all of us, so. This doesn't go back to previous trainings, do you?
You can go back as far as this calendar year, so from January 2025 through the end of the year, as long as this gets adopted, KLC will honor that.
Okay. So, I think Commissioner Thomas and I would be getting that first.
You already, you already hit it.
Can you wait till tomorrow?
No. Right now.
Any other questions or thoughts?
Mayor Commission, you know, this is something that had to state and had the conversation, and I appreciate Commissioner Thomas bringing this back up for, in dialogue on this. But to the point that was made or asked by Commissioner Smith with, in regards to the county, you know, that is something that their KRS does allow and gives more flexibility, but it's also something that, I know I've had conversations with KLC and seen if there may be an opportunity during the national legislative session to give the same standing to cities as counties have in this regard. I mean, there's a lot of things that, that it's a big, you know, that counties get one way and the cities don't, but I think continuing education for all elected officials is very pertinent, very appropriate. And to me, I think there is value in continuing to press for legislative, to allow the local decision to be similar to what the county has. And so, we'll continue to have that dialogue. And the other aspect I would, is that although the KRS for cities does allow other appointed officials beyond just elected to partake of this, I made the determination that as appointed officials, as myself and other of our department heads, we have other avenues in the pay scale to address that. And so, we purposely did not include ourselves in that, it's just we only addressed it for the elected officials because I felt that we already had those avenues available to us.
Okay. So, what other areas that would, you know, that the counties are doing other than this that you're speaking of, you know, that would be a legislative fix?
Well, and in relationship to the counties have, right now can set their own level, and we're capped at the 500 per year. That is, the KRS that addresses the legislation for cities allows the county more flexibility. I'm not sure what our, what McCracken County has adopted. And Lindsay, do you know what they have? Is there?
Pam did send me, but I don't have it off the top of my head.
But it is more than the 500.
It is, yeah, a good deal more than.
And so, so that's one of the things that I think that each local elected body should have the opportunity to make the local decision for there at that and not be arbitrarily capped just because the KRS says that. And so, that's something that we continue to have dialogue with KLC to help, and I know that other communities have had that as well.
Okay, well, we'll come back to this in a couple of weeks, and we have one more ordinance to introduce, and I'll ask Lindsay to read it, please.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 118 Vegetation of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance amends Chapter 118 Vegetation of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah to modify the role of the appointee to assist with developing a tree planting and replacement plan for city-owned lots and right-of-way and serve as the official staff support for the Tree Advisory Board. The amendment reduces the number of members on the Tree Advisory Board from nine to five members by removing the Parks Director, City Engineer, Planning Director, and Public Works Director as members of the board. The board is required to provide an annual report on its activities and goals to the City Commission. This amendment creates a tree voucher program for the purpose of enhancing the city's tree canopy. The amendment delegates authority to the Fire Prevention Division to cite and abate vegetation on private property that projects onto public ground through Chapter 42 of the Code of Ordinances.
So moved.
Second. You want to take the first stab at it?
I will.
I'll fill in the blanks.
Sounds good. So, staff has met a couple of times with Mayor Bray and Commissioner Smith about this and tried to come up with some vision for the next two years related to the Tree Board and our Tree Ordinance. So, from that, a few goals came away for amending this ordinance and some initiatives that we would like to see take on. They wanted to see the ordinance be updated and that the, to develop a tree voucher program as a part of that, that would be focused on canopy trees and replacing canopy trees and that type of thing for city citizens, and streamlining the process of intake for citizen questions when they are calling in about different questions related to trees. So, the first step in that process was we took a look at the ordinance and have some high-level changes that we would like to make to it. The ordinance does change the membership of the board from nine members to five members, and it does that by removing the city's planning director, the parks director, the city engineer, and our public works director as voting members on the board. So, that is more in line with how most of our boards are formed, and it also kind of streamlines that for us. It does make sure that the parks director or her designee is considered the appointee in the ordinance, which means that that's the primary staff person that's going to support the board. So, they'll be at all of the meetings from here on out. It also kind of redirects all of those questions towards the Parks Department so that individuals aren't calling in to our engineering department and our public works department and fire prevention and parks and things kind of bounce around from department to department. So, it kind of streamlines that. It requires the board to give an annual report to the City Commission on their activities and goals for each year, which is in line with how a lot of our boards are done. And it requires the Parks Department to, in conjunction with the Tree Advisory Board, develop the tree voucher program, and that's something that we've talked a lot about and that Parks is actively starting to develop right now. Then, the last thing is currently how it works is if someone has an issue where there's private property and there is overgrowth happening from that private property that's coming on to the right-of-way, or we are going to officially put it in ordinance, that that is going to be abated through our Fire Prevention Division, which is how it's currently handled, but we're just outlining that in the ordinance. We, I shared some of these updates with Jonathan Perkins, our chair of the Tree Advisory Board last week, and he's given some good feedback, and so, we're going to work through some of that, and there might be a few tweaks and changes before the second reading, but generally, I think this is kind of the, what you're looking at for, for the changes to the ordinance.
Okay. Commissioner Smith, any comments? Yeah, just, this is something I think we really need in Paducah. If you look at a lot of our public places, you know, Jefferson or Boulevards, those kind of things, there's a lot of trees, some of them are dead that need to be taken down. You need to be putting some new trees out there. You know, that's, it's kind of in two phases. One of them is for the city property. The second phase is for individual homeowners that, you know, if you think of a pretty neighborhood that you want to live in, a pleasant place, normally those are places, if you think about it, they've got a nice, they're nice and shaded and all. You walk through a lot of Paducah neighborhoods, there's just, you can walk and you go, this is in the middle of the sun. You look over there, there's an indentation in someone's yard where you probably, there was a nice big shade tree there, and we've had ice storms, tornadoes, that sort of thing that has taken out a lot of our tree canopy. I say canopy, these are trees that will grow big and it would just, you know, it's like anything we do with this, it's going to be 20, 30 years before you see anything, but now's the time to do it. We're really doing it for future generations, and if we can help enable homeowners to, to plant canopy trees, you know, it'll really make the city a more attractive place, so that's kind of it. It's kind of a long-term thing, and really, in the scheme of things, it's not a lot of money to spend to beautify Paducah, so. One other thing I'll add is that over the last, well, since I got elected the first time, I mean, you know, from time to time, there's a lot of discussion out there about trees. I mean, a developer will come in, buy a piece of land, it's their land, they own the land, but if they take out a whole lot of trees, you know, there's, there's this cry, you know, from people, you know, and I understand that. You know, when we, when we, we're still building the Paducah Sports Park, but, you know, the Greenway Trail over there, you know, we took out some trees. There was a lot of, you know, a lot of, several number of people, you know, were upset about that. And so, while I don't think that this Advisory Board really has any, any enforcement powers, let's put it that way, but we do need a group of folks who are advocating and aware of what is happening in the community as it relates to our tree canopy. Tree canopy is, it's very important. As Commissioner Smith said, it really signifies, trees signify beautiful yards, beautiful community, beautiful parks. You know, we have Noble Park over there, we have a lot of, a lot of trees in Noble Park that are, at some point in time, they're going to start coming down because they've been there for a long time and we're going to have to figure out a way to replace those. So, I think we see this advisory, this reconstituted advisory committee, which are going to be looking for some members, we're going to, we see this committee as one that will help advise the city on how we move forward and also, you know, be aware of things that are going on in the community. So, if there's people that are out there that are passionate about tree canopy and, you know, and want to get involved, I'd, you know, we'll be looking for some people that get involved with the Tree Advisory Committee, so. So, it's been, been a while in the, in the works, several months we've put into this. I appreciate city clerk Lindsay, all the work that she's put, put into it, so. Any comments, thoughts, anything? You good? Everybody good?
Good.
So, we have two discussion items. The first, the first item is we are in budget season, and so, we've asked Jonathan Perkins Senior, not Junior, to come up and opine about the city budget, and we wouldn't ask you to opine about any trees, John, so.
But he could. I've heard a lot about trees. He's not a Junior, actually. We have different middle names.
Okay, well. Ah, but hey, he's a fine boy.
He is. I've known him all of his life and he's a good guy. So, the city manager asked if, oh, by the way, good evening.
Good evening.
Commissioner, city manager, city clerk. City manager asked if we would come before you all and talk about what goes on behind the scenes during the budget season, and so, this is nothing more than that. We'll not involve any numbers, just the process. And so, basically, what we do, and again, the old timers will know how this works, the newer ones may not, we start putting together the budget process as early as January and sometimes as early as February, and we work on it. The process doesn't complete itself until you all do your thing, you pass it, pass the ordinance, and then we post the budget book out on the website. I broke this down by month, so you can see, there's a lot of detail here, but I'll try to go through as quickly as possible and keep you awake for the next presentation, which is even more riveting. First thing we do is we put together a budget calendar, so we have the guidance. Next thing we do is we update what we lovingly refer to as the squirrel notes, and the squirrel notes were nicknamed that by, I think it was Fire Chief Kyle years and years ago, where we would squirrel away notes, and that's what he, he called it, and now everybody calls it that. So, what that is, is every single budget that we have, there are many, many notes. You go back and look many, many years back, see exactly what you did a couple of years ago, many is 10 years back. Next thing we do in January, and some of these are happening all at the same time, we start looking at health insurance enrollment stats, you know, how many people were covered, how they recovered families, and then liability insurance coverage, trying to get the cost estimates for that. That's a big piece of what we do. A lot of things that the departments don't have any control over. And then, the public works folks, in the Fleet Division particularly, they put together a fleet acquisition plan and project out, you know, how many police cars we need to replace, how many dump trucks we need to buy, and it's an extensive, extensive plan. The city probably has 250 rolling stock at a minimum, and that runs through a lease trust plan. So, the, all the vehicles by the, all the rolling stock owned by the city are owned by this trust plan, and by that, I mean this. So, you buy a police car that costs you $45,000, it has an expected life of, let's say, eight or nine years. We use a straight-line method. We figure out how long it's going to last, and we charge the department a monthly fee for the eight or nine years until that's fully paid for now. Just because it's fully leased out, the car never belongs to the department, it's just on lease. And so, in the old days, when people would do the best, speakers would get up before the commission and would say, hey, I need these things, and they got all the vehicles, and those that were not good speakers didn't get anything. And so, this is a fair way to do it. It started back in 1999 and it's been a very successful program. Next thing we do, again, we're doing this simultaneously, payroll accountant starts putting together, figuring out how many full-time employees, part-time folks we have and what their fringe benefits will be, and we have 340-ish full-time folks, a number of part-time, and lots of different benefit programs to go with that, from health insurance to pensions and life insurance and such. So, it's a, it's a major undertaking. And then, we do the next thing is to schedule meetings for April, which we just finished last week with the departments. Now, the next month, in February, we give that planning calendar out to the departments so they know what's going on. Hope is in charge of the next one. Grant aid application, that begins. The grant aid program is money you give to not-for-profits, generally speaking. They have to go through a certain process, application, and that takes some time to do that. And then, HR department gets with Kentucky League of Cities and P. Lynn Holland are broker, and they start putting together our insurance renewals for all types of liability insurance, from work comp to general public officials, general liability, you name it, we have it covered, and we've done that for many, many years. And then, the next thing we do, we open up the computer system where we can actually get into it, start using it, start putting together. get into it, start using it, start putting together revenue projections. So the year we're in right now, the revenue projections were done as much, as early as 18 months earlier. And it's a difficult, it's a difficult thing to do. But based on history, that's, that's how we put it together. We try to figure out, you know, what the major revenues are going to be, from payroll to property tax, and so on and so forth. And then we try to figure out, in reality, how many depart, how many people really are going to work for the city, full-time and part-time. And then we ask the departments to verify that's accurate. And at that time, they might also say, well, you need to add some, some bodies and that kind of thing. As we, we'll have proposals this year to do that, that very thing. Next thing that happens is the Finance Department has a number of accounts that it has control over, utility fuel and that kind of thing. We know how much fuel is consumed, you know, whether it be diesel or gasoline. We know about how many, how much you use in a way of, you know, atmos, for natural gas, water, electric, and all those big utilities. We do that for the departments. And then your favorite is done next, and that's the BOC, Board of Commission. You all get together, spend quality time for two days, and figure out exactly what your priorities are, so that we know exactly how to react. Then the Finance Department verifies all the payroll cost projection, we just mentioned that a second ago, and take all those factors and put them together. And February is finally over. In March, we complete the Fleet lease trust calculations for all the vehicles, once they've told, the departments get with the Fleet folks, they figure out exactly how many police cars we need, dump trucks, parks, pickups, or whatever it is, or even some large mowing equipment. That's a major plan. And the payroll cost projections are now finalized. Everything that goes with that is put together so we can see exactly what the cost is per person, we'll know exactly what it is. Revenue projection should be completed in the middle of March. And then we allow the departments to start going in and putting in their own budget requests. By the time perils in, and all the accounts that the city, Finance Department controls, doesn't leave them a whole lot left. But as you know, approximately 60 to 80% depending on the department, the cost, it's people. Next thing, we ask the departments to, ask the departments to put together a list of their, kind of a wish list of capital type things. And we now are building a capital improvement process. Audra Hernan, Audra Kyle handles that, and it's an extensive document, so we know exactly, we think we know, exactly what the capital needs are of the city. Whether it be for fire departments, police departments, parks, bathrooms and, and parks, different things like that. All those things have to be documented. We have to figure out exactly what's what, and so you can set a priority on which, what we're going to do. This next one's a brand-new item. You all, as a board, have had jurisdiction over this 9-1 budget for many years. Now it has its own board, separate, and they put together their budget with the assistance finance, and the PD helped, helped them to do that. And then they came, I think Parker, Mr. Parker came before you all and presented the budget to you. That's what that's about. And then Hope's grant and aid application process closes at the end of March. And then we jump into April. We're there right now. And so at the beginning of April, the Finance Department gets with the city manager, the city manager's office, and we review the investment fund, the status and update. We update the general fund, where we're at, where we need to go, and then if there's any capital process, any capital items that need to be reviewed. That's the time we do it, the first week of April. Then the HR folks get their information back to KLC, so we can start getting estimates on the premium cost for the city. By the way, on that one this year, for the first time in many years, specifically on work comp, our modification rate, which is a measure of risk, has come way down, which is very, very good. And that's driven by, I think they go back three and four years, that's how you go forward with it. And so I think it was the fourth year it fell off, which was an awful year. So that's probably a large part why they went down. And it also helps that we have the right mindset of safety, is really important to us. Then last week, we, the Finance Department met with all of the department heads and talked about all the various funds, various operations. I spent a lot of time with the general fund operations. And then this week, starting, I guess this is Monday, it feels like Tuesday, this is Monday, city manager and the Finance Department sat down with a number of different departments, even today, and we will hope, hopefully wrap that up this week. And he gives the departments guidance and direction as to where we're going to go next. Then the BOC, you all, you get the opportunity to sit down one-on-one with city manager, finance, and start going over the high level of how this budget's going to be put together, making sure that we've got your priorities in order and they're funded properly. That'll probably drag into May, I think, a little bit, not too much. And then whatever you, whatever input you all have, we'll go back into that budget document and we'll change it, make it work right if it's not right, and that kind of thing, so we can start building our ordinance. At that same time, this is something that is a little more technical, but in the capital improvement budget, that's where we capture a lot of projects. A project is nothing more than a thing that's going to be, again, I want to pick on parks. Say we're going to build a bathroom. No, a better one's probably flood wall. Some, some projects are really long. The flood wall project seems like it's always going on, it's been 20 years probably where you have in that thing. Then you might have something as easy as putting cameras down the flood wall, or downtown, or whatever it may be. Those are projects, those are capital. We're going to capitalize that kind of thing. And so this is where we capture those kinds of monies. If you, if the commission says we're going to spend $10 million on a sportsplex, and it takes three years to build, we don't pay the vendor all upfront, they get paid over time, over two and three years, whatever it takes. Same thing with the flood wall. In the meantime, especially with the flood, you have to figure out where we're going to get the money. Now, it's pretty, pretty expensive, and it has to continue to be maintained. So that's what that's about. And then we submit to Lindsey, for you all, the first ordinance for the year, for the budget, rather. And then you do your first reading in the month of, of May, at the end of the month. And then we finally get to June and July, and in that, we take everything that you have approved, and we update a spreadsheet that shows you history, where it's been, where we're going for expenditures and revenue, and that kind of thing. And then you get to do the second reading, and at that time, that night, we have a big party because it's finally done. And then you know you're really done, when the budget book gets posted to the city's website. And this is an example, Pam puts this together for us on our website, you can go look at any time. In many years, in fact, that's live right now, or current, that's not a live shot, but it's a picture. That is exactly what we try to show, so people, the citizens, understand, you know, what's out there, what we, what you all have worked on, what staff has worked on for months, literally months. And then this is a sneak peek, for the first time you get to see this, this is the actual cover for the '26 budget book. You might recognize that scene. That's pretty much it over six months.
You all pretty much stay on schedule? Are you ever behind?
We, we have to, because if we don't.
You're not going to be prepared.
It won't work, and I'll tell you why it won't work. We have to get you all the first read about the end of May, second reads in June, and then we take that and we go backwards and make things fit in. It's like if, if something were to have happened this week where the city manager couldn't meet with everybody, we'd be in a little trouble, because things build. It's just like a math problem. You don't know how to do basic math, you can't get to the rest of it, except you're working backwards. And that's how we've learned to do that over the years, and it works pretty well. Sometimes we have some hiccups, but for the most part, it works pretty well, pretty well. We have an extensive, this seems extensive, we actually have way more detail. I tried to keep as high a level as I possibly could. There's a lot of other things that take place. There's a lot of people involved in this process, a lot of people. The departments, because my shop does that, city manager's office, and then you all get to, get to chime in as well, and we appreciate that. So glad to ask, answer any questions you might have.
Well, John and Audra, thank you all for all your efforts. I know there's a lot of, a lot of effort that goes into this, and, and I think it's one of the strongest parts of our city, you know, is our Finance Department, the way we approach budgeting and the way we manage, you know, taxpayer revenue coming in. We provide a lot of visibility to citizens where the money goes, how we spend it. We give people plenty of input. And Cheryl, I know you're here, you know, about the bathrooms at Robert Coleman Park, but at some point in time, you know, in this budget process, you know, those bathrooms were stuck into a budget plan. And so we go through a budgeting process, you know, we just don't write a check and decide to do something, you know, we have to plan for it. So it's a very important process, but it works, and, and all the commissioners have a chance to, to weigh in. So when we hear from people in the community about something that needs to be done, that input does go in and prioritize with, you know, other things we got going on. So that's, that's really part of the, kind of the way the sausage is made, so. Any other commissioner comments?
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Absolutely.
And now we'll go to this, he's, he's not sitting down because he's, because he's waiting to be called on. So the next point of discussion is Paducah's Tax Increment Financing Districts, TIF. So when we first heard about TIF, going back to 2019, I think, is, is maybe when we started in the discussion, and nobody really understood it. It is a complex process. I know that, you know, I had, I had to spend several hours on the phone, you know, having people walk me through the process, so I could understand, you know, exactly how our TIF worked. But the good news is, we've achieved a milestone, and so I would invite you to, to tell us about it, John.
Okay. You stole my thunder.
I was just trying to do the strong lead-in.
That's, that's good, thank you, just like we rehearsed. So I think the planning folks probably were playing with this as early as 17 and 18, I don't remember exactly, but it just seems like it's been forever. And what we're going to try to do tonight is do a 50,000-foot flyover, explain basically how we believe it's supposed to work, and what, some history lessons. So we'll just go from there. So what is it? So this Tax Increment Financing, or TIF agreement, it's actually between the city and the state. And we also have one between the city and the county. And years ago, a group of folks, a staff, got together and decided to identify the specific area. I'll show you the picture of the area in just a second here. And as, see, some of these are quick forwards. So this capital investment is, takes place in a particular area, new economic activity is generated theoretically, and should be. And then with the larger revenue base available, that's the revenue base of the state, not the city, they now legislatively can generously share with us some of their money, based on lots of conditions and criteria. And then, as I mentioned a second ago, we also have an agreement between the city and the county. Now, it actually has already hit, started a year or so ago. It's a much simpler plan, but it works really well. And the county and the city got together, the county agreed to share with the city in that particular area, the property tax. And simply put, the way it works is, and I'm going to make up some numbers and some dates, it doesn't make any difference how, but let's say, for instance, in the year 2020, the tax base for the property tax for the county and the district was $100. And then the next year, in 2021 or 22, the tax base grew to $110 or $120. So the increment is the difference between the new, right, the new revenue and the old base. And so the city gets that difference, and then we can take that money and we can reinvest it back into the TIF, the TIF area. Does that make sense? Here's the picture. Mary, you mentioned in 2019, that's when it actually got established. And the footprint basically runs from 600 Broadway, actually into, literally into the river. And it goes from Wilson Stage roughly to the Convention Center, down river. And the area was deemed, I didn't write this word, I don't usually say things like this, but it was ripe for picking, I guess. Anyway, so I think we all believe and have for a long time that downtown is, is the right place to start throwing some money, and that's exactly what this does. I have an expression, I heard somebody else many, many years ago. It's called other people's money, and acronym is OPIM. It's the OPIM of government, I guess. It's other people's money, not just our money. Anyway, so that's why that was selected in that area. It was just the right place, the right time, and we knew coming back then, you know, if you can see it today, finally, six, five, six years later, the bill grant, because the flood has, you know, slowed it up a little bit, but it will crank up again. Back in 18 or 19, or something like that, the feds gave us $10 million to start that program. Now, Darren, you got to help me with this one, I don't remember exactly what that project is up to now, but it's a lot more than $10 million bucks. And then also the Columbia Theater was putting in upgrades, and then lots of other things were going on downtown, even at one time, another hotel. Here's a bigger picture, again, still hard to see it, but you can see it kind of as squiggly lines carving out, like friends, I believe the, if you can see it, US Bank Building was carved out. And so the question, why would you carve that out? It's because apparently somebody at one time believed that that would be some kind of a negative growth, because you can have positive increments, you can also have negative increments. And so anything that we could, they could figure out that they thought there may be a pullback, you try to avoid it.
How would that be negative growth?
So if, if you included X company and their payroll was $1 million bucks, and then they disappear.
Oh, I see.
Their increments are negative of $1 million bucks. So you've got to be careful. You can't know exactly what's going to happen, but they did a pretty good guessing job on that particular one, and then others like that. And tried to include things that they thought, like they, they had no basis at all, and they had potential for growth, like the new hotel, things like that. And again, there's no hotel, I know, in the works down by where the Biggie used to be, let's put it that way. Okay. So how do we get the money from the state? Well, back in 19, did a study and found out that there was, in that particular district, of all those businesses and condos or whatever they were, there was a compilation of $575,000 of property tax, state property tax, state sales tax, and state income tax. That's the base. And then now, the year we're in right now, and 20 years going forward, every time we, every year, we get to figure out what the state revenue is compared against the number back in the base year. That's the increment, math difference is all it is. And this last bullet point is something that's, I guess I didn't know for the longest time. Corey, Corey's the TIF queen in our shop, she understands this going forward, backwards. That base year, you compare it to the future year, but the base year is adjusted upwards by inflation. So that 575 could grow out at 650 over a few years. So your increment has to keep getting bigger to get ahead. Does that make sense? We talked about this a little bit already. Capital investment. So the story goes like this. Back in 19, when we started looking at this, the state agreement said that for us to even start this process, we had to get up to $20 million in private and public capital investment. That means streets, roads, bridges, condominiums that are being built in the private, private sector, the list goes on. And so that's, that's where that comes from. And our deadline was, in fact, they gave us two years to do that, we took the extension of another two years, and we made it. And the deadline was, I think, March 25 of '25, so we're just past it, and, and we made it. Here's a compilation of where, how we did this. Here's a compilation of where, how we did this. You can see back in twenty-one, it was around eight million dollars, twenty-two went to nine and a half, twenty-three was fifteen plus, twenty-four, I say twenty-four because it's really technically at the end of December, it surpassed twenty million dollars. And to give you perspective on this, of the twenty million dollars, about seven million is private. And, uh, to break the city, the, the public part down, for instance, the convention center's roof was around two million bucks, that counted toward the twenty. Dredging, unfortunately, we had to do some dredging on the river, and that was around a million dollars. And again, a lot of this could have been driven by grants, not just general fund monies. Uh, the greenway, uh, six hundred thousand dollars, uh, bill grant at that time, it's just starting to get going, and that was a million bucks. City block, three million dollars, so, and it adds up, those are the big ones, but then there's lots of little ones in between. Every time somebody comes in and they want to improve a condo, or our upper story programs, if, if we're going to give them incentive, they have to give us detail, that's how we know what it is. And so if they spend a million dollars on it, it counts. And it doesn't stop, it doesn't stop at the twenty million. Our ultimate goal, I guess we'll go to the next one and tell you that here, ultimate goal is a hundred and fifty-six million dollars. So you don't automatically get all the state's money in the first, unless you, unless you're at about a hundred and fifty-six million dollars. And so, in simple math, and I used it earlier, the way it would work is, your base year's a hundred bucks, let's say in the future, it's, it's two hundred dollars, the revenue, the math difference is a hundred dollars. And the state says, you only get half of that potentially. Then it gets reduced by, in this example we have right now, we have twenty million dollars toward the hundred and fifty-six million, so you take twenty million divided by a hundred and fifty-six million, times half of the increment. That's how, it's not necessarily complicated, but it's not as simple as the money's there and you go get it, that's just not how it works. But if we continue to grow like we've been doing, you know, it's, it's conceivable that you could get to it. I would never have dreamt in five years, we'd, we'd be looking at twenty million dollars, I was just, and that was without a hotel. So once you start building that kind of thing, and, um, making those kinds of improvements.
So do we, we, do we know what the potential benefit to the city is?
Maximum that we can ever get is twenty-one million from the state.
Twenty-one million.
Twenty-one, right, over twenty years.
Okay.
So if it were a perfect world, you'd get twenty, you'd get a million every year. And you did ask me the question, and I forgot to tell you this, but the money, the first monies that come in have to come back to the city to pay off debt, or anything associated with the cost of us developing the TIF program, for instance. We've paid consultants, contractors to help us to develop this, a bond issue, we just floated one for the, uh, build, uh, four hundred million dollars, so it's, we've got to pay, we have to pay that off, uh, before we could even think about giving that money to somebody else as an incentive. But if things go well, you never know, you might, you might do it quickly, it just, it just depends.
And the way we pay that off is, when the money comes back from the state, it goes, like if we had seventy-five thousand dollars in payments, bond payments in a year, that seventy-five thousand would go toward the payment, right?
It is, uh, first ten dollars from the state TIF has to go towards that year's debt payment of an activity that occurred within the TIF.
Okay, exactly. So like on our four and a half million dollars, uh, typical annual payment is probably going to be around three hundred thousand, and we don't, we've not yet received our first payment from the state, and we won't, probably for another eighteen months. Now, we have been getting money from the county, uh, and so we are able to use some of that to, you know, pay off some debt, but it's just, it's going to take some, it's going to take somebody else's money to make a real difference. But we're headed in the right direction.
So I think, you know, part of the real story here for me, you know, is that when we started down this journey, you know, we, uh, we were gonna, we needed to have a hotel, you know, in our, in downtown, in order to make our TIF, and so...
Well, we didn't have the large capital expenditure, it didn't have to be a hotel.
Right.
Right.
Something that would provide retail development, that taxing.
But the plan was for a hotel, and it was, it was going to be the, the big kahuna, if you will, the, you know, the, and as I recall, like thirteen out of the twenty, you know, in original nineteen, two thousand and nineteen dollars, pre-COVID. But now, you know, here we are, post-COVID, and the hotel didn't happen, you know, there, uh, it's happening somewhere else, uh, but we, I think we all know that, that downtown Paducah is our, it's our crown jewel, one of our crown jewels in the community, and so it just, um, it keeps on growing. Uh, and, uh, so it's a, it's a really healthy sign, you know, that we've got a really strong downtown, and we'll have more, more money to invest in public infrastructure, you know, going forward, uh, as the years go by, so.
I'm just glad we did it, because it's a really, it was a tool that a lot of other communities were using to get money back, and we weren't, so thankfully, we made it, and we'll get that money now.
Why not? If you can make it work, make it work.
So we're ready for TIF number two?
Probably, I don't know why we wouldn't be.
Exactly, so. Okay, commissioners, any questions, thoughts, comments? Okay, thank you very much, John, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I gave you mine, because I didn't know you had some up there.
You can, you can have that cookie. Um, city manager, any comments?
None this evening, Mayor.
Uh, comments from the commissioners?
I just made a note, I mean, we have a lot of visitors coming into our city this week, so we just encourage everybody downtown and the areas that that may end to be looking around. I know our city employees have been really busy with flood control, that we still need to make sure we're putting our best foot forward to have a downtown clean and looking good.
Well, speaking of flood control, uh, you know, one of the items for discussion was with the quilters being here and the flood wall up, so we've had gates coming down, uh, this morning, uh, around the convention center, and, um, so the timing is actually pretty good, because the river is, we didn't get a lot of rain over the weekend, and the river is, uh, has crested and is on the way down, so knock on wood, but...
Let's get the gates down and get the city downtown cleaned up.
Chris and Amy and the rest of the crew have been heavily involved with working downtown in advance, yep, uh, just for, but to the point that we've had a high river, the, you know, the floodgates won't be down around downtown, um, uh, but as soon as we are able to get in there, we've got a lot of work to do on the wet side, as the water continues to recede, so just to caution the public, it's not going to be, okay, we open the floodgates, you can go drive in the riverfront, start walking on there, we've got a lot of work to be doing, and we will have to take safety precautions and to allow our crews to get in there.
Yeah, I've been down there, there's a lot of driftwood, uh, you know, that's washed up, you know, everywhere, and places that you normally wouldn't see it, so there's lots of work to do, but, uh, anyway, we're on the, we're on the right side of that, so.
If I could add, we also got a lot of nice artwork in city hall, so for the community members that are watching at home, come in and check it out, because one thing I talked about with our city management team a few months ago, I don't know how long, was bringing more art into the city, I know this has been like a couple of years in the making, but I love to see art on our walls, it really brightens up city hall.
Well, we are a UNESCO creative city, so, uh, yeah, that, uh, that fits right in, so. Okey-dokey, uh, we do have an executive session, uh, tonight, and we do not anticipate taking actions, action afterwards, and I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
A proposed, uh...
I'm ready, this is...
You ready? Let's go!
A proposed motion to go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics, a specific proposal by a business entity where public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion, or upgrading of a business entity is permitted by KRS sixty-one, eight-one-oh, subsection one G.
So move.
Check. Call roll, please.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes, aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Okey-dokey.